Join me please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my privilege this evening to introduce Reverend Sue Hobbs, who will lead us in our invocation this evening. Reverend Hobbs is well-known to most everybody here. She's a minister over at the Methodist Church here in Garner. So if you will, Reverend Hobbs, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the privilege of coming, and I greet you all in the name and love of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I have known Mayor Williams for many, many years and appreciate his support with the clergy, but also with the town and the council as well. You know, there's not many town council meetings that open with prayers, so we are very privileged that a town council still recognize who's in charge. Let us pray. Holy and gracious God, we do bow before you in thanksgiving and praise for who you are, our sovereign God. We thank you, O God, for this town. We thank you for the privilege of having such leadership that is in clear discernment of who you are, that is intentional about being in prayer before you. We thank you for their guidance. We thank you, O God, for the community in which we live that loves their children and loves the youth of this town. We pray, O God, for peace, your peace. We thank you, O God, for the support of families. We pray for our children and youth that will be going back to school and some who are already in school. Dear God, we thank you for that gift of education. We thank you for a town that supports education and is so strong in the school system here. Continue, O God, to bless all that are gathered here this night. May we all bow before you, and may we bless you as we strive to serve this town, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, next is petition to comment. That is time on the agenda for anything, if you wish to address the council, anything not on the agenda. If you wish to address the council, anything not on the agenda, come to the podium, pay your name and address. The adoption of the agenda. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thought the agenda is presented.
Take it. All in favor? Hope I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I wrote some notes because I want you to hear every part I got to say. Richard Geller is my friend, and he has been for many years. Shakespeare said, "A friend is one that knows you as you are, understands when you were how you have been, and accepts what you have become, and still likes you." The work that Richard has contributed to this community for many years has saved the taxpayer rate a lot of money. Richard is the type of friend who will stick around when you screw up and go through challenges in your own time. There are many words that describe Richard: best friend, brother, supporter, good friend, buddy, generous, loyal. He became a friend who visited the sick and elderly in Garner and gave relief to those in need. Richard, we left work one day. Rich arrived with me in Raleigh. I said, "What for?" He said, "Right with me." So we rode to Raleigh to that core half town town, Wake County owns, and he checked the fellow out of the hotel. And when he got in the backseat of his car, he patted Rich on the shoulder. He said, "Richard, excuse them, Jesus, you're the best person I know."
Yes.
So he puts you second. He says, "Boy, Richard, you're actually first." Richard, I got this award we wanted to, if you'll come forward now, do what came to do. Come on, Richard.
Green is not.
Now, look, it's early. Somebody made, come on. Somebody made comments earlier, but if you want to make comments again, it's right here. Richard, I have to count assistance from Ronnie and Tony. I'm presenting the campaign's deal to Garner.
Actually, good enough.
Here I am.
Thank you very much, and God bless all of you. I thank about the award, Ronnie Williams, who was working at both offices, a teenager with me, and I graduated in the Army, wanted to Army to apologize for those officers. They hired him back, and he come back. They hired him back, so I raised him, and he turned out real good, Richard. Give old right and pound bold. Somebody standing there while I do congratulations, I said, "Congratulations for what? I was just doing what my mom and daddy had taught me, to be good to folks, to love the Lord, and be good to your family." And that's what he started. I come into Garner nineteen years old and got in the fire department, and three days later, I wrote a five foot, didn't have a little training, then a few old songs while I lived, but I took off with all my guards and nothing. Ladies and gentlemen, man, a better place in the world than live, raise a family, have a friend, go to church in Garner, where I was. The board is doing a tremendous job there. Look at that, they're big bid at night. Used to be a little big, see that? When you had one police chief with the knife, and one lady working at the town hall with seven with her. That was not, that ain't been all that many years ago, but that's how it all gone and come, and it's come with good people working together, loving one another, doing. I've already introduced my family, one of the greatest things a man in the world can have, first of all, is the Lord in his life and a family. If you ain't got that, go home and see what you can do on the knee tonight, and you'll feel better in the morning. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. James Stevens was a particular friend of mine. I find my own, his daddy's farm down in Wake County before me and him changed it on. Went to Mount Lion Church with you, thank you. He done everything when he got to Garner he could do to make Garner better. So I feel honored with his family to be able to say, "I was his friend." Ladies and gentlemen, God bless you for coming. Stick together with your family, your friends, and your loved ones, and Garner keep getting back, keep the old fire department rolling. I love all of you, God bless.
Now's the time, if anybody does want to make a comment, go to the podium. Well, I guess everybody's pooped. Rick, you want to get a picture? Where Rick at?
Is it here or there?
So where do you want to get it?
Begin here with the.
Yeah, yeah, tell me.
It's still here if that you.
Richard, we can come. That's good.
You can do your time now.
Come on around. Coming up here.
Yeah.
Thank you, brother.
Are you gonna get a award? You want one with a award?
For sure, for sure.
He's a, he's a.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you, brother. Thank you, honey. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Best bowl there is, y'all. I listen to that every day, just about on the TV.
If you listen to us every day, you might have more, that's all I got to say. If you listen to us every day.
I've lost it by the end.
So he thinks pretty well controlled, these come on when somebody's. I didn't think I had to turn any of them on.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Let's pledge counsel on that.
Move to approve.
Thank you, everybody.
As a motion to approve, and second all in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Public hearings. New and old business, bond tracking, Michael Gammon. We'll show Michael.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tony Chalk and I are here to bring you the August update to the Bond Project Tracking Report. If you'd like to get started on the top half of the cover sheet, we'll walk you through the financial changes since your last update in June. So since the last update, there's been about $2.3 million spent across all bond programs. The vast majority of that, just under $2 million, $1,959,000 is for construction projects. Obviously, the vast majority of that amount has been spent on the Recreation Center project and, of course, what we're standing in right now, Town Hall. Other than that, we've spent about $118,000 for sidewalk projects, $24,000 on, so far, on the new Rand Road project, and combined the new shelter at Garner Rec Park and the remaining projects at the Lake Benson Dog Park have tallied to $131,000 since your last update. A couple additional remaining charges that we've accrued over this period of time, just under $61,000 for professional services, $260,000 on equipment, and $1,500 for land acquisition. I want to refer to the bottom half of your cover sheet. We'll walk you through the accomplishments and highlights since the last update, starting with Parks and Recreation Bond Fund. If you notice, if you've been over on Main Street, the concrete slabs have been poured and masonry walls are going vertical over at the Recreation Center site. The Lake Benson Dog Park Parking and Stormwater B&amp;P Project is nearing completion. Town Saff is still currently working on developing qualifications for design of the South Garner Greenway. And the last update in Parks and Recreation is the new shelter in Garner Rec Park is substantially complete, and the associated paving in the Garner Rec Park has been completed. I'll jump over to the Redevelopment Bond Fund, Recreation Center Projects Improvements, the Stormwater, U.S. Highway 70 and Montague Street. Improvements are all currently under construction, and there's no real change with the underground power and utility lines associated with Recreation Center construction. There's no changes to that update. Tony will walk you through the public safety and service facilities and street and sidewalk bond funds.
Good evening.
Evening.
Excuse me. On the Town Hall update, I think the best news I can give you there, you probably saw it coming in as you're seeing the all-site roadway work, is making some substantial progress. Do believe that, weather permitting, I think we've got some rain coming tomorrow night, but they should be here the rest of the week, and I hope to see these road improvements completed this week. So that's good news on that one. And jumping over to street and sidewalk, Thompson Road Project's progressing fairly well. This week, they're concentrating on getting backfill in, some dirt, extending the slopes out, and will be moving probably in the next few weeks to get the aggregate base course in on the roadway improvements. But that project's moving fairly consistently forward. Are there any questions on any of those? We are. Probably within a month or so, we will have plans developed enough on the Avery Street Sidewalk Project to engage the public on Avery Street in some conversations regarding easement acquisition and right-of-way on a few properties, but I will notify council again before those meetings start to take place. Yes, sir?
The folks on Thompson Road got started off pretty well and made some pretty good progress the first month. Now, this is ending the second month, and last two or three weeks, this has been very sporadic. The last couple of days, they had people out there watching the equipment because there's nobody doing work, and really for the last couple of weeks, it's been kind of sporadic. I don't know why they would need another couple of months to get on with putting down the base course. Looks like they're pretty well ready to do what they need. There may be other reasons of combining efforts and the way they schedule work, but they've been at it two months out of their either three or four-month contract. I would encourage them to keep on going because they'll miss the deadline if they just... And we've had beautiful weather, had a little bit of weather on this type of thing, although the type of base course we're putting down, it's not like it's clay. It withstands the rain, and they can get back out there much sooner, but I would encourage you to keep on pushing with them, so that we don't just run past the... It's not that somebody is waiting on it and is dependent on it, but the sooner we solve that school problem, the better.
My speculation is that they're probably going, well, it's full-deck asphalt, it's not stone that will be put in. I haven't asked the question, but I'm speculating that's probably what they're waiting on, is you have to get the asphalt in to put the curb on top of it, and getting asphalt, getting the pavers to show up is an act of Congress right now.
It may be something that's beyond their control, but anyhow, enough said on my part.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, and it's probably a pretty obvious answer, but on Seventh Avenue is the entire length from Aversburg to Vandoor Springs. Is that going to be resurfaced completely? It's not going to be just patched here and there?
No, ma'am. It's, they were finishing out this afternoon with the westbound lane, but the entire road is getting milled. It was patched, and it will be all milled, and it'll be an entirely new roadway put-back. Same thing, Aversburg Road is getting patched and overlaid from Fifth Avenue down.
Thank you. Just want to be sure.
Regarding Avery Street, there's been no additional sidewalk or curbing ground on there, it'll just be additional paving for the roadway. It'll just be the installation of the sidewalk on Avery Street and Curtis.
That's correct. I don't think we have any, I don't think we have any new curb installation. It's just a sidewalk installation and maybe a, depending on what we have to do at the intersection of Curtis and Avery, you might see a retaining wall constructed there just to limit the amount of right-of-way we need. We've spoken with the resident, and they are aware of where we're heading with it, but it's just sidewalk, and for the most part, we would need slope easements to tie that in.
That's good, and we won't have to wait for asphalt to do that project.
No, sir.
Okay, good.
You want to flip over to the bond improvement summary. There's no major changes on this page. As always, we want to refer you over to the far right-hand column for the council's next steps, these are the next steps you'll need to take in order to keep these projects moving on smoothly. Other than that, the Buffalo Road Sidewalk Project has been moved off of this page and onto the Completed Projects List. So unless there's any other comments or questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think Mr. County may have.
Well, Tony, do you know if they've ordered the steel trusses for Rex?
Yes, sir. They have ordered, and I know that they're looking lentils to start sitting above doorways today, so the steel, I think they're topping out the mortar, I mean, the block walls today. So the steel set was, I don't have that exact date, it was either late this week or next week is when they should be starting to set some of the steel trusses.
Right. Been by there just to see if they had them on site. One of the things that Mr. Lee mentioned last week, that they had probably approved 95 percent of the shop drawings that would be needed, and obviously, that's a good step ahead, or it's a good milestone to reach. The next hard question becomes is, have they ordered the materials? And if you would find out about that at the next regular schedule.
To the level that we can, we can ascertain that and report back.
Well, now, it just satisfies you, but just to push them, it's one thing to have it approved, another one is to order it, because to me, that's what's held up for a while, is even if they had people out there, they didn't have materials.
Yeah. I do believe on the steel, it's a matter of staging. They don't, they don't have a lot of, they got some room to put it, and I think they want to have the equipment there to place it, have it delivered. It'll probably be over a stage a few days, and you'll see it arrive and get put into place.
That's a good point, because it takes some big equipment to move it around, and that's not one thing you want to do, it's not like moving a load of dirt all over the place. But you make a good point on that. Good. Thank you, Tony.
I would just observe, I wrote about it today, and there were lots of workers there on site, on both the front and the back of the facility, as you said, I guess, are they topping off the center block walls, it looks like?
Yes.
So a lot, a lot of folks at the site today, hopefully completing that. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if council's finished, just wanted to add.
One thing to the report before we're done.
Okay.
All right. I think that the manager has let council know that Mr. Gammon has accepted a new position with Wake County, and while we are very excited for him, for his new position and opportunity, we are going to sorely miss his skills in working with us, and I just want to recognize him publicly for all the work that he's done since he has been here. He has taken us very far in both the development of our budget and set us on the right course in developing a new format for our CIP, and has done some behind-the-scenes work for helping us do a better job at long-range planning and long-range budget preparation. So I just want to take a moment to thank him on behalf of the manager's office and wish him well in his new endeavor.
Well, good on you, sir. We're looking for some good means. Yeah, could I just say, Mr. Mayor, that in addition to all the nice things that John said about, he's a pretty pleasant guy just to kind of be around and deal with, I really appreciated having Michael here. I believe you started essentially as an intern, didn't you, Michael?
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, you've done well, and look forward to, great things from you over at the county. If you get tired over there, come see us back over here.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I really, really do appreciate the opportunities that have been presented to me here while I've been at the Town of Garner. I think I mentioned tonight, my first meeting was the second meeting in August to give a bond update during, in the meeting where you passed out the James Stevens Award, so it's kind of fitting that my last meeting is the same timeframe here three years later. Again, thank you very much for all the opportunities you've given me here at the Town of Garner. I really do appreciate it.
Mike, you've done an outstanding job, and you're doing an outstanding job with the county, and whatever your future holds for you, but appreciate the work that you've done, because you have streamlined the budget process. You know, I've been doing this for a while, and I remember, the budget's come a long way, the budget process has, and I thank you for what you've done the last few years because it sure is evident.
Good luck.
Since we're doing it this time for the benefit of the folks that, if you would, keep the camera on Michael, but yes, Michael Keem, it might have been it was an intern job, but we were very fortunate to get you to come to work with us, and even as an intern, you took us under your wing and you brought us forward. I think to the public, you should know that Michael is a very intelligent person. He's motivated, he's capable, hardworking, knows, he's well-informed, knows the budget backwards and forwards. If he doesn't want to give you wrong information, but he can look it up pretty quick and get it to you. His leaving is a big loss, but I'm sure that there's somebody out there that is looking to fill, to succeed you, I won't say fill your shoes, but now Pam's just got the job of finding that person, that needle in the haystack. But Wake County's gain is our loss. Yes, I have to be happy for you, because you, sky's the limit. We've enjoyed having you. It's made the one aha moment, I'd have to tell folks, that we were, had a meeting one afternoon, we're going after it, going at it for almost three hours, and somewhere around the two hour and 30-minute mark, "Ah, I got it." Saw what we were working on, and then everybody just joined in, and we moved ahead, but that was, that was a fun time. That's what you, what we like to see happen. I'll always remember that, and so, thank you, Michael. Enjoy working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the service that you have given to us while you were here, and I bid you God's speed where you go, and I'm quite sure you will be a blessing to your next position. Garner will miss you, and if the county says bye, come back to Garner.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I still like to think that while I will be leaving, I'm still serving the citizens of Garner in another respect, so again, I really appreciate all the opportunities you've given me. I've learned a lot working with the staff here, all the opportunities they've given me, and being able to work with council and have opportunities like this. I'm very grateful for it.
Ken Marshman and I were very fortunate this week. We had a chance to meet this gentleman up here. Yes. The gentleman sitting on the second row here is, I wrote your name down on another sheet of paper, so I forgot it, but at any rate, he is part of the Garner 101 class, and I must commend him because I know one of the requirements of that class is to come to a council meeting, so here he is, right after he started the class. Maybe he heard this is scheduled to be a short meeting, I'm not sure, but why don't you just tell us your name, sir? I couldn't remember.
I'm James Keen.
Yes. Okay. Any reflections so far? Any reflections on anything you've seen tonight?
Well, this is, of course, the first meeting I've seen here. Smoothly, but I will say this, where I'm sitting right now, it's difficult to know who's speaking, because the monitor is covering your lips in a lot of cases, and if you speak in a low tone, it's harder to understand. I'm a next, well, not necessarily that, once your tone's bad, so you're always a tone bad. And a little more, I think of the, still looking down here, he makes everything a little lower, and I have time to check that out.
Thank you for letting us know, because it's just our second meeting here, so we're still working out the kinks.
Yeah, I had to kind of look around and say, "Who is talking?"
You could raise our hand and say, "It's me, it's me." No, we'll work it out. Thank you for your interest. Come back anytime. Okay, committee reports. Manager reports. I'm trying to do better. Manager reports.
Mr. Mayor, I think under committee reports, just want to make sure, I believe there has been a long finance committee meeting scheduled. I know there's no report yet, but I just want to make, just confirm that there is one that's been scheduled for the 29th.
Under manager reports, the Garner info report is in your packet. We had a couple of Town Hall updates we wanted to pass on to you. As Tony has already said, the paving obviously has begun, and we hope that's going to get completed this week and next week. The additional work for interior finishes that council authorized for this chamber and for some other areas in Town Hall is scheduled to begin tomorrow. We held them off until after this meeting so that they'd have more time to complete that, and so, once we see the progress on that work as well as the paving, then we will possibly bring some potential dates for an open house to the work session next week, when we think we will know more about schedules, and discuss potential dates with council at the work session, if that's okay with you.
Very good.
The finance report is in your packet. If you have any questions about that, Mr. Gammon is still here, can answer those for you. We also want to make you aware of...
Thank you for letting us know, because it's just our second meeting here, so we're still working out the kinks.
Yeah, I had to kind of look around and say, who is talking?
You could raise our hand and say, it's me, it's me. No, we'll work it out. Thank you for your interest. Come back anytime. Okay, committee reports. Manager reports. I'm trying to do better. Manager reports.
Mr. Mayor, I think under committee reports, just want to make sure, I believe there has been a law and finance committee meeting scheduled. I know there's no report yet, but I just wanted to make, to just confirm that there has one that's been scheduled for the 29th.
Under manager reports, the Garner info report is in your packet. We had a couple of town hall updates we wanted to pass on to you. As Tony has already said, the paving obviously has begun, and we hope that's going to get completed this week and next week. The additional work for interior finishes that council authorized for this chamber, and for some other areas in town hall, is scheduled to begin tomorrow. We held them off until after this meeting, so that they'd have more time to complete that. And so, once we see the progress on the, that work, as well as the paving, then we will possibly bring some potential dates for a, an open house to the work session next week, when we think we will know more about schedules, and discuss potential dates with council at the work session, if that's okay with you.
Very good.
The finance report is in your packet, if you have any questions about that. Mr. Gammon is still here, can answer those for you. We also want to make you aware of an update at the Garner Technology Site. There is a notice of remedial action plan that has gone out as a public notice. Basically, what has happened is some legislation occurred a couple of years ago, that will allow some sites that have contamination to end the monitoring process sooner than was in the old legislation. And so, Withers Ravanell, the consultant that has been working on behalf of Conagra for a number of years, is following through on that plan. They've sent out a public notice to surrounding property owners, and we wanted you just to be aware of the fact that if you hear of any questions about a public notice that's gone out, it's to do with a positive thing, that there's evaluations being done, and if certain criteria are met, some of the monitoring wells may be able to be removed sooner than originally planned. This is positive for us, because it may remove some of the barriers that, that might be in the way of some of the development projects that we're looking at for that site. We also wanted to give you a couple of updates on Garner Recreation Center. Ask Mr. Chalk if he'll come back up, and give you some guidance on reviewing the mock wall for exterior finishes, and I think he also has in the back of the room, the final finish board, that if you want to take a look at that tonight, you can. You may recall that council approved an interior finish board by the architect, and once the project was bid, the contractor then selects materials that they deem to meet the specifications. So the board we have here tonight is the board that has their final selections of materials. So we've got that here for you to review, if you would like to see that. And I'll get Mr. Chalk to give you some information about the mock wall.
The, excuse me, again, the mock wall for the Rec Center, if everyone knows where the job trailer is along Main Street, the wall is between the trailer and the curb. It's two-sided, so again, staff will be glad to meet any council member there that wants to go, if you want, if later on you want to do something as a group, that would, it's fine, however, we want to get your thoughts on it. But if you stand on the road, looking at the wall, you're going to be seeing it as if it's, what you'd be seeing from Main Street looking, if you walk around it, and there's a little gravel pathway, and look back towards Main Street and the railroad tracks, you're going to be seeing what would be on the interior of the site, looking at the entrance to the, to the recreation center. So you'll see the brick, the exterior materials as they are represented on the wall. You also have the backing, which is just your standard concrete masonry units. I think it'll be very obvious to you when we see it.
Yes, I, last couple of days, I was riding by, and I noticed that, fortunately, I did, that a lot of times, I, I can look and completely miss it. But when I was, two things of some importance, three. One, I didn't realize, I knew it was a backside, but I didn't know there was anything back there to see, so I didn't get out and go look. On the front, I saw the, essentially, the, the primary brick, and then, which was, got, it's basically red, or red ton, reddish tone. Below it was a brown, was some brown brick or earth tones. Is that accent, or is that going to be a prominent part of the building?
There, one thing I'll get and get distributed to council, so they go, it is, it's a accent, or it's a contrasting, to break up the solid brick, the redness in it, we did have some recessed areas with that different colors in it. And I'll get that available, so you can have that with you when you go. I'll make sure everyone has copies of that, so that you could see, and see where these colors are going to play out.
I wasn't exactly excited about it, but I don't know how to choose colors in the first place, but it, as long as it's not a, it's, it's accent, and a very, in a relatively minor role. The last thing I'd mention is, there's a panel that's six or eight feet wide, it's of the brick, then to the left of it, and immediately attached, is a concrete wall, a concrete block. I reckon it was there for a purpose. What, what are we supposed to be looking at when we see that, that concrete block wall?
It's just the backing for the, for the other side, so there's no material on that, that's just, you have to have the backing, so we can show you the other side of the materials, if you were, if you see, it's a two-sided wall, with one half of it being the backing for the other side, if that makes sense.
Well, where the brick is, will it be up, will it be, where we're putting the brick, will it be up against a, I mean, a concrete block wall?
Yes, sir. There will be an insulation layer in between, and then your brick veneer on it.
Okay, so that, we won't be seeing plain concrete block?
No, sir, not at all. What you will see will be the, the materials that you're looking at on the outside.
And what is it you say, you, you want to get to us to help better explain it?
Well, we're trying to, I'll pull up the diagram here, that can show it, the colors are not going to be the same, but you'll be able to see where these colors play out in the, in that, but then I'll also have some, have some copies that you can take with you, I'll make them available, so you can have that to look at.
So just because it came first, if you remember this video we had done, I'll pause this here, and you can see that the back of the building is primarily red brick, but there's accent of a beige material above the crest, and then around some of the window openings. So as this continues to play, hopefully on your screens there, you can see a little more detail, and you can see how there's a beige brick that's used at the bottoms.
Well, I'd interrupt, but I'd encourage counsel to look at that closely, because the brick that's in that, the color that's in this picture, is very much lighter than the brick that's on the job.
So, so this is just a computer model, this is only supposed to be a general representation, so the shape of the building is pretty exact, but again, the colors are not intended to be your exact colors here, only the placement. So, on the Main Street side, you'll see that this is primarily brick wall, with a few accents of the beige at the bottom, so, see, you can see here at the corner. So again, the, the actual material that's on site, we think matches the selection board that you selected from, although that's been some time ago, very well, this is not an exact representation of the color, but it does give you the placement of the colors. So on the Main Street side, you will have minimal of the lighter color, primarily a band at the bottom, and then on the other side, you do have some, and you see this from another angle, it's the bands across the bottom, the columns by the windows.
And this is probably exactly what you presented earlier, just on us, but that's the reason you put up the wall, so you can see it?
Absolutely.
That's correct.
But if that helps you some with placement, and if there's anything else we need to get you in terms of diagram before you visit, we'd be glad to do that.
And on the interior board, I'll leave that here, and afterwards, or I can hold it up now, but they're pretty obvious, it's just, you've got paint colors, your countertop colors, and your main carpet color in the office areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, just want to remind counsel that the clerk's office has communicated this to you, but there is a, an NCDOT public meeting for public officials on September the 4th, I mean, September the 7th, that's being hosted here in our training room, and that is for the 40 widening project, and the 40, 42 bridge widening project. There are also public meetings, I think the public meeting is being held at, at Garner United Methodist Church. Our room was not large enough to accommodate the full public meeting. And then lastly, there's an invitation at your seat for a ribbon cutting this Saturday for the shelter at Garner Rec Park, and that is at 10 o'clock, and that is also the opening day for the downtown pop-up market, that we've scheduled to have, I believe, about 40 vendors at the market.
Is that 10? I thought the original was 9 o'clock.
I believe it's been 10, I don't have the invitation with me, but...
It's been changed to 3:00. It's 10 now.
Is that going to interfere with the pop-up market, because it usually starts at 10?
Right, and I think it was purposefully done to be sort of the grand opening of the market, as well as the opening of the shelter, but it was coordinated with Parks and Rec and, and GRA to, to be, to coincide.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Mr. Attorney, have any?
I know, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel report. Let's start with Ken Marshman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Wed, excuse me, August 16th, I'm not sure if that was Wednesday, but at any rate, I have the privilege of attending the Wake County Transit Implementation Plan, and so, as is noted here, it says the first bus service improvements were made this month in, in August, and based on the prior planning process, now we are reaching out stakeholders to establish a public engagement plan, and so they have a project schedule. There's a place to go online to their website, and to make comments about the rollout of this between now and August the 31st, so I wanted counsel to be aware of that, and, you know, they lay this thing out really over a period of the, the next 12 months is, is a timeframe for that. So, I can give you the website, if anybody wants that. I wanted to commend the Wellness Committee of the town, I guess, maybe some of the committee members out there, I'm not sure who's on there, but anyway, I've been very impressed with he and his staff, in terms of some of the things they're doing. Encouraging employees to become familiar with the, the new town hall, and a lot of other things that I have noted over time, so kudos to, to all those who are involved with that, doing well. Eclipse, give a report on the eclipse. Oh, yes. In case you didn't know, the Parks and Recreation Department had on our website an opportunity to invite people to come out and see the eclipse on the back lawn of the, of the Jeep Act, and so the mayor and I came out, and we were able to acquire some proper glasses, and I don't know how many people were there, Mr. Mayor, but there must have been at least 100 people or so, I would say. It was a good event, everybody seemed to have a good time, and as far as I know, nobody's retinas got damaged, hopefully. But, yeah, it was, was quite, quite the occasion, so I want to thank Parks and Rec, or whoever thought about putting that together as well, and acquiring, I think they, they get the glasses from the Morehead Planetarium, so, so it was a very nice event. Thank you, sir. Yes.
Yes, sir, a few things. There's a business called Oak City Motors on Mechanical Boulevard, and they have cars parked on the shoulder opposite the building, as well as in their lot, advertising them for sale, and it's a hazard, and it's parked in the right of way, and there's probably eight or 10 cars parked along there, so we can look into that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The next, the medians on Highway 70 at Jurgen Road need to be mowed, they, they look pretty bad, and they're, they need some attention, and I don't know what authority we have, but inside Garner Town Square, the, again, the, the grass needs to be cut badly, particularly on the side where Target and Kroger are, it's really bad. And a question, I am going to the League of Municipalities Conference in September, is there anyone else from the town going? Are you going? Okay, good, because I was a little concerned that we didn't have enough representation. And then the last thing, Stella, would you look and see what the temperature is in here?
Feels pretty good to me, but I have on a coat.
Yes, you have on a coat.
We're not side by side.
Yes.
This is wonderful.
What, 69.5? I'm just going to make a statement, I'm going to ask, number one, what does it take to get it to a tolerable temperature in here? Room temperature is 72, and Wake County Public Schools have their schools set on 75, and I'm not asking for that, but I have cold air blowing on me constantly throughout the meeting, it's not comfortable at all, and I would like to know what we need to do to, to recognize that some people are cold in here, and how to handle that.
Ms. Barringer, that's, we talked about that with public works staff, and the computerized controls that set the temperature for this room are supposed to be set at 72, and they checked earlier, and it was, and so we need to see whether there's some sort of defect or disconnect in terms of the, the computer being set one way, but the experience in the room being different. So we thought that we had corrected it, but now that we see it's not working, that'll give us something else to go back and troubleshoot.
Yeah, when we came in, when I came in tonight, it was 68, and Stella tried to set it at 72, thought she had, but it stayed at 68.
Yeah, I've already contacted public works, so we'll make sure that we have it correct for the next meeting.
Thank you. And that's all, sir.
I don't hear anything, but I can hear about the temperature.
It's just too cold.
Great.
I disagree, but I worked outside today, so it feels good to hear me.
And if I was in the second meeting, we're still adjusting.
I was drenched. Question on the, the, at the end of the project, whether they're going to widen 40 from exit 301 to 312, are they going to add a lane on each side from 301 through exit 312, is that correct, Tony? So whether it's two-lane from exit 306 down to 30, or it's two-lane, there's three-lane some places, are they going to add a lane all the way regardless how many lanes are there, they're going to add one more lane on one side, on each side? Is that, is that, that is correct, right?
I think that's correct. I don't want to say I haven't been as involved in that particular, but I think they're adding a lane in either direction, and so your statement would be true.
Okay. Just want to make sure, because some people asked me, because, you know, they want to get the two-lane part to three-lanes, they said, but, you know, as you come in where it merges down there at exit 301, you know, there's three or four lanes, there's four lanes that merges into three, they said, they're going to, they're going to be in a district lane, I says, I understand there is, but that's why we're having the public meeting.
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks for your help on that. That's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'll make up for the shortness of, or the briefness of my fellow council members. Over the years, we've, actually, from early 2004, we've raised questions about getting lights on the west side of 401 from Mechanical Boulevard down to Old Stage Road, and staff has followed through with it, and the answer always comes back, is that Duke doesn't want to put in a lot of time on such a small project, they do it in conjunction with something else. That may be the case from Duke's perspective. People ask me about it, and why isn't, why hasn't it been done? Is there a better answer to give them? Is, is there anything that the town can do about that?
Mr. Trezenberg has been working with the folk, the DOT project that is designing the 401 Super Street project, to see if there is any way to get the work incorporated with that. If Mr. Chalk has anything additional, I'll let him add, but I think that, that most of the routes that Mr. Chalk would typically use to have lights added, we've not been very successful with, and Mr. Trezenberg is going to try to see if we could get it made a part of a project.
For Mr. Hodges, that, that's correct. For there to be lights added, it would have to be a holistic approach, both sides of the road would have to be lit, from point A to point B, wherever we chose. If it's Old Stage to the merge, it could be done as a project, we would have to fund that project, and lay, lay the lights out, and push it forward. I think one of the things we were pausing for was to see if we could do the lighting with the, the Super Street construction part of it, because if we put them in, there's a good chance they're going to get relocated fairly quickly with it. But again, it would be something if council desires to take that on as a lighting project, and so direct staff, then we can, we could engage Duke Energy in a lighting design, and then it would go through, back through DOT, and sometime probably in a, it's a long drawn-out process, mine take would probably be sometime in a year or so, we would have a, a project ready.
I'm only one voice, and, and I'm not going to push the issue unless the rest of you are interested in it, and you don't have to say so tonight, but unless you wish. That's just a, that side of the road is dark, it's, that's where we've had some of the, the police chief has told us in years past, that area where we had a higher number of traffic accidents, not necessarily in the dark area, but on, up near the intersection of Mechanical and 401. I'll leave it at that. Second thing, law and finance, your meeting on the 29th, which is next Tuesday?
I thought it was 28th.
It's 29th.
Oh, is it 29th? Okay. Yeah.
Which one is it?
It's the Tuesday, at 8:00, is it, that we're meeting?
Okay, right here. Yes, the 28th, it says here.
Oh, okay. So that's Monday?
I believe it is, yeah.
Okay, I had on my calendar for Tuesday.
What time and where?
We're meeting at 8:00, in the second floor conference room of this building.
Y'all mind if I drop by for a minute or two?
Come on.
I think we could probably...
Talk about finance, all right? I won't, I won't keep, I won't keep you long. Any update on the, the meeting, and I know Rodney's been out, but any update... Any update on, uh, the, the meeting, and I know Rodney's been out, but any update on the, the discussion with, uh, fire department?
Uh, I do-
Have y'all heard anything?
I don't believe the manager's been able to find a time that worked for both bodies, um, and so, uh, that was his update as of Friday, before he was out. Um, when he's back, I will check in with him, but I think that, like I said, he was, he had not found a, a time that worked for both boards to meet.
I'm gonna make a suggestion. We're gonna have to do this, pick a date and have the meeting. If we, if we can't make it, they can't make it. This is, that's how you have a meeting date, you pick a date, and you say, this is the day we're gonna have it, you can make it, you make it, if you can't, you can't. So we're gonna have to pick a date and do it.
We need to.
And Mr. Kennedy, I talked about this, suggest a Tuesday, because most of the council members will all be here, because we have a meeting on, on two Tuesdays. So the, the third Tuesday, and the Tuesday of our work session, and he suggests a Tuesday due to the fact that we have, uh, we're usually in town. But, uh, we just need to pick a date, if you can make it, you make it, if you miss it, miss it, it won't stop. It won't, I mean, we won't shut down the business, so if we can't make a meeting.
Okie dokie, thank you, great. Uh, a little bit of a house cleaning measure, and I don't know if, if we need to try to squeeze this in before Michael leaves, we need to get a formal amendment or revision in our, in a policy statement on finance, to incorporate the new, uh, savings rate schedule for, for the revenue savings program. It, it can be done anytime, but while we've got three people that are familiar with it, and instead of reducing it to two, at least you might help us with a draft. I'll leave it at that. Okay?
Okay.
Um, John, do you, and I know you told us it's still gonna be a little while down the road, is the plan currently for Davenport to be meeting with us around the time, or perhaps in, just in advance of, but around the time for the planning retreat?
I think we can schedule that, um, anytime now, really, so I think-
Will we, do you, have, has anything been done, any preliminary planning on a retreat to, that would suggest they need to be there, instead of trying to get multiple visits out of them?
Um, not enough planning done to determine if they should be there at the retreat, or as you may recall, in the last couple of years, we've sometimes had some of those informational meetings prior to the retreat, so you have background information to use. So if it's okay with you, as we continue working on, um, concepts for the retreat, maybe we'll just come back and recommend whether or not we think it would be best to have them at the retreat, or come before the retreat.
I'd, I'd be glad, but, and is their primary, uh, purpose of being here, instead of me guessing, can you, and I know this is, you weren't necessarily prepared for, but I'll give one guess, we, we were, we were talking about getting ready for the next bond sale, and discussion of financing major capital projects, is that, uh, our, our bonding capacity?
I think we can come and give, have them give an update on bonding capacity anytime. I think the work that they helped us do, um, recently, when we were working on the Meadowbrook sale, we have a model in place now, that they can simply update for us, and, and we pretty much know our, our borrowing capacity. So I think that the best thing to do is probably determine what information we need, have them update it, and then come present it, so that you have it to use in discussions at the retreat. So I'm thinking that may be an update prior to the retreat, with the, with the borrowing capacity updated, and use that information as you go into the retreat and any future planning. Ms. Wortham, do you have any, any additional thoughts, or, or Michael either one, as to any better timing for that?
Um, good evening. I don't have a specific recommendation in place, but we are getting ready to issue the installment financing, so I'll be working with them to some degree. Uh, I can get them to incorporate, um, an update on our borrowing capacity, and maybe be prepared, uh, the first part of October. Would that be sufficient?
And I think it takes a little bit of time to make sure we know what it is that we want, instead of just having them come along and, and answer, and try to answer impromptu questions, but I know, I always enjoy, and I'm always feel educated and enlightened when, when they, they come, and it's, but I, I don't want them to come just to be here. Uh, I, whenever you think we can get a, get, the staff can get their thoughts together on what, and bring it back to us, or have some discussion, perhaps at a work session to, to cover the possible topics that they, they could help us with, if there's anything in addition to what I said tonight. But, uh, at, at least we know it's in the, it's in the works, that they're coming soon.
Can I add one?
Sure.
Piece to that, because one of the things, we will have our, um, financial sentiments ready, and to the auditors, probably the first part of next week, they will have their audit report to us shortly after that, within about three weeks. Um, and when we finish that process, obviously, we'll be updating our revenue savings plan numbers, uh, and then they'll need to incorporate that into our model as well. So when that's complete, that might be a good time for them to come.
Yeah, and before Michael leaves, you reckon y'all can put your heads together and give it a preliminary estimate of what that number's gonna be?
Absolutely, we can.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm gonna do something I don't normally do. I don't look, normally look for this, but the other day, it jumped right up at me. Anybody looked at the Drury Inn site lately?
It's mowing back.
It needs a haircut.
That's terrible.
It, it's, for its beautiful place out there, it looks hideous, in light of everything else that they're, they're just constructed. Say no more.
Might suggest if somebody puts a hotel out there, it'll resolve that haircut problem.
They might, but it really, I, I think if they saw it, they'd, they'd ask somebody to go out there real quick. Um, other folks have asked me about this next item, and, and it's, uh, I'll, I'll tell you what it's about, and it's about the Roar Ball, Roar Ball Bridge. I don't think that that, that dip in the road is getting any better, if anything, is getting slightly worse, and I don't know when is the best time, or who has the most influence with DOT, but I just don't think that we need to go on for years and years and ignore that. There's other places in Wake County I know for sure would not tolerate, uh, that, that bump, and, and it's highly a travel road and speed they're going, that's the, I, I hope we can do something about it. I think there are remedies, um, and, and fairly straightforward remedies, uh, 'cause if you can't raise the bridge, you can lower the, you can certainly lower the grade for the last twenty feet, and it doesn't take a, a month of Sundays to get it done.
Mr. Kennedy, I, when they, um, did what they said they did to correct it, what, a couple of years ago, it came through the grapevine, but what I heard was they said, and that's all we're doing.
Oh, I, I was, I've been told that by one of the engineers, and I was very disappointed when I heard it, but, you know, maybe that-
We need to stay on it, 'cause it's not, it's a, not good, and it's not gonna get better.
And I didn't look into dustbin to drag these things out, but they, they started coming to mind. Uh, on the lighter weight side, I've really got used to having, uh, a clock in the other council chambers, and it just, that doesn't have to be an architectural masterpiece, but could we find a way to get a clock in this place?
Yes, sir, we can.
It, it could be little, it, it doesn't matter to me.
Don't make it too little, or we won't be able to see it.
Oh, I, I, all right.
You can't right back there, we can't.
Last thing, in the, in items, and y'all may have picked up on this, but in the consent agenda, we had some, uh, agency funding requests, and, and it had been approved in the budget, and now they came back with their contracts. Did anybody notice anything unusual about some of them? I'll point out, turn, look at page thirty-one, if you would, the, the one that might cause the most concern.
About the amount of money they have?
About the loss, they had cash on hand June the 30th, a year ago, of two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, and it decreased almost a hundred-and-seventy thousand. Makes me think, do we, how do we, are we funding, uh, uh, I don't think this, this organization should be in any, any trouble, but, Pam, do you, have, do y'all have any thoughts about, this is, uh, this is the Family Violence Prevention Center, uh, doing business as interact. And, and I'm not trying to put them down, but that, that's kinda scary, unless they had a major capital project that, and you would think that they must have, must have had some major capital investment. Anybody got, can enlighten us?
They, they provide a lot of other information, that's not, that we don't wrap up and put in that consent agenda, I can go through their application and, and double back. I'm, I'm confident that it, it would be related to something, like you mentioned, like a capital campaign. Uh, those cash statements as of June 30th, you gotta remember, they don't operate on the same fiscal year as we do, so, you know, there could, there could be another anomaly in there, uh, because they're reporting cash, uh, they're reporting that, the end of their financial year on a, a different fiscal basis than what they're normally used to.
I think I'll stop right there. Thank you, appreciate that.
Mayor, could, could I interject one thing, just to clarify, Mr. Kennedy, they asked when the Law and Finance Committee meeting is meeting, excuse me, is meeting?
Thank you for being here.
I'm hearing something in the background. Anyway, um, it, it should be Tuesday, the 29th, right, at eight o'clock? Uh, that's the date we had originally, uh, put, I think, and, I, I was just reading off of a, of an agenda here, so, uh, Tuesday the 29th, instead of Monday the 28th, eight o'clock. That'll help me get to a doctor's appointment.
Right.
Buck, I couldn't help but just thinking, uh, I don't wanna be too flippant, but I was gonna tell you that, uh, you know, that Roar Ball Bridge, everything I, every time I think I might need an adjustment on my back, I try to drive it.
That oughta do it.
It's, uh, it's problematic, it is, really is.
Does it work?
Well, fortunately, I haven't had too many back problems, but I may have if I keep going across the-
I didn't want to leave, you know?
Yeah.
I'll thank clerk and the deputy clerk for providing the refreshment tonight, good job. Also, did everybody see the Chad Barfield announcement?
Everybody what?
Did you see the Chad Barfield announcement?
Yes, sir.
It's not going to run again.
Hallelujah. Oh, okay. There was a-
Oh, yeah, yeah, I saw that. It, it was a disappointment, too, when, uh, that county manager's stepping down.
I don't believe we heard the last of that.
Yeah, he can't, he can't camp out in the register deeds office, that's ridiculous.
Good. Need a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion is second, all in favor, above my sign.
Aye.
All opposed.
(noise)